...here, but it's all just gathered in one place for you to see. And so what you'll see here is this one-page template, actually, this is provided by MDE, tells us the specific categories of information that they want us to present. And this one-page document will actually be electronically submitted to MDE along with every district needs to present this world's best workforce. The ultimate goal of this is, as the legislative title says, is to ensure that you have a plan in place to create students that will become members of the world's best workforce. Okay? And so if you go to our website and you, under Teaching and Learning, and right under there, the second link down is World's Best Workforce. If you click that, you'll be able to see the legislation, which is the first page that you come across when you're in there. And then the second link here is the link to the one-page document that you just received. And then underneath that, and this is where it's all things that you've seen before, the achievement goals. Let me zoom in on that a little bit. There's our strategic plan, specifically the achievement-related goals that fall under that strategic direction A are listed there, the progress report that I presented here on the eighth, and then the plan that shows how the mission of the district is aligned to school improvement plans is aligned to individual teacher goals. And so any one of these, you can go into. And then underneath that, again, showing that alignment, is each of the school improvement plans for all the schools in our district. Okay? Then there's categories, again, these are provided kind of loosely by the state for how they want this presented. Under Student Progress and Monitoring, there's our Assessment Calendar Framework. And I'll click into one of these just to show you, again, this is things that you've seen before. So what is the testing plan within Shakopee? Let me zoom back in on that. Under Student Progress and Monitoring, oh, where I was. Then there's information on the Achievement Gap, which I shared last time, links to the standards for our courses, and then actually a copy of that board report that was presented here on the eighth that really gives a summary of where we are at academically and with the implementation of our strategic plan. Under Strategies for Improving Achievement, it lists some of the things that we are going after right now. So for instance, you see we don't recreate the education forward, all the information in here, we'll send you to where that already exists within our website. The design team recommendations, another state initiative that Read Well by Third Grade Plan is in there as well. And then also our evaluation plans or continuous improvement plans for both our administrators or our principals and our teachers are in there. So this really has lots of things, all trying to respond to what the world's best workforce plan calls for. And one thing that's, I mean, it was nice to gather it all up in one place, but it also was we weren't creating something new for this. These were all a lot of pieces that we had in place that were all aimed at, I think, at what the intent of this legislation was. Okay? Even down to, they require a community survey as part of this, that we had recently done that as well, and so those results are up there too. Okay? That's all I had for this, because anything I would pull up specifically is things that you would have seen before.
Any questions?
So I was just going to add that it's the world's best workforce that really is part of the measurement of why we have the new college and career readiness test of Explore Plan and ACT. And where that sort of mandated mission for all districts now is to ensure that students are all college and career ready. So that's, all of that came out of that legislative piece.
Any other comments? I just wanted to say this, this looks like a lot that just came right out of our strategic plan.
A lot of it did, yeah. So I don't know, which one of you is the legislator in here?
We have one question, stop. Are you going to have links in the actual soft copy that'll draw whoever's going to consume this on the other end to our sites, or do you actually have to have data points?
You know what? This is what they asked us to submit, was this kind of summary page. And so what I have in there are some links and some data. We'll see, if they don't like it, they'll tell us.
Send it back.
And then we'll do that. But I think they called this a summary, and we were really trying to keep it to that rather than, I mean, this would literally be hundreds of pages that we have here again. So we're directing them to where it all is, and if they want it the other way, we'll redo.
Dave did some research about how other districts were doing it, and most were doing this type of a webpage design. And then I would assume, you know, sort of leaking that document to it rather than trying to do a, you know, a long narrative. But we looked at several models from other districts, and this is kind of the, seems to be the majority way that districts are handling it.
In some of this, the reporting on this, this is the first year it's happening as well, and so I don't know if they're always sure what they're looking for. They had originally put an October 1 deadline, but sent the template out for how to submit it on September 29. And so it was kind of a tight deal there. So I'm not sure they necessarily have a good vision of what they're expecting either, so.
I have one question for you. I love that we, that parents can go on here and see each school for themselves. Is this live now? Because the last time you showed it, it wasn't live.
Yes, it's live today now, yeah.
And is there a link on each school to go look at the workforce?
Right.
So that your parent could look at that?
You know what? Right now, the only place the link is at is on the main district page under World's Best Workforce. If you think there'd be value to doing that, I could certainly ask the webmasters.
So like you're saying, Angela, on the individual school sites, you'd like to see a link back to this, is that what you mean?
Right, where they could see their particular school. Because I would think it would take a lot of digging for a parent to maybe find that currently.
And are you thinking that they might, that they might be interested in the whole plan, or just more specifically in their individual?
Their own particular school.
Okay.
So Sweeney parents, they want to look at?
So you want to see Sweeney's plan posted on Sweeney's site?
Right.
We can certainly do that. We can certainly have them do that. All right?
Anything else? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Distillation.
Dave, you could have done it in one day.
Absolutely.
I'll go to 5.2, Recommended Scheduling and Elective Requirement Changes for the Middle Level.
This is a continuation of our discussion from the last board learning session, where we talked about some administrative recommendations for altering the grade six through eight schedule to improve flexibility in terms of offering more student choice of electives. And, so if you give me a second here, we'll get this up and running. And so just as a kind of reminder, our goals when we made those recommendations were to ensure that we are really starting to live that mission of making sure that any required course does help propel our kids to career and college readiness. One thing that administratively we feel very strongly about is that increased choice in the middle level will help students entering ninth grade to make better choices, because they will have some time to kind of explore their interests, or their interest at the middle grades. And that also, anything that we put forward, it needs to support our design parameters. Just to kind of remind you, we've had a process in place, and we're coming to the end of that process today. We presented recommendations to the secondary staff and to the Curriculum Advisory Council for feedback, and we've been collecting that feedback and re-reviewed it all last Friday and made some decisions about what kind of revisions that we wanted to make. And we did decide to make a few revisions as a result of the feedback. Just as a reminder again, those recommendations were, we're going to keep with the seventh-period day, but we need to increase flexibility of scheduling, that the middle school proposed schedule changes would increase student choice of electives in seventh and eighth grade, and that our articulation teams would be the party responsible for proposing course changes or revisions. Some of the feedback that we received for staff, what happened is each individual principal collected feedback from staff, both written in kind of oral and terms of conversations. I did as well in our tick committees, as well as individual meetings with departments or individual teachers. Some of the common themes that we've, that we received as feedback that I just want to talk to you about was, there was a couple of departments especially, that were concerned about loss of required curriculum. So especially if you remember in grade seven and eight, where there wasn't really a lot of choice, we had to eliminate some required courses in order to put choice into the schedule. So there was concerns about that. A totally understandable concern was uncertainty about how putting choice into the schedule could affect staffing, and that was a common theme that we heard. Another one that we heard from a couple of departments was just concerned about the timeline for implementation, because we had recommended that the changes go into place for the upcoming school year, and wondering if we should try to phase something in rather than do it all in sort of one fell swoop. And then another one was concerns about requiring in sixth grade band or choir. Remember, we had talked about the fact that we wanted them to have some kind of performance-like experience, and especially, I would say, on the part of the choir teachers, some concerns about kids being forced into choir, and then what would the impact of that be? And then also, PE expressed some concerns about managing a day-one, day-two schedule, and especially as it pertains to locker space. And then we had a couple of interesting suggestions about wanting to arrange the gateway courses a little bit differently. They wanted Health Science in seventh grade and Human Service in sixth, and kind of the same switch with Engineering and Science Technology. So we talked about each of those different areas of concerns, and then we decided to move ahead with a couple of changes. The first is in sixth grade. We agreed with the music department that probably just choosing between band or choir might end up with sort of not getting what we are exactly looking for from a performance experience. So we're going to, we're recommending that we go back and look at sixth grade as a choice between band, choir, or a course that we're calling Music Production. It wouldn't be a standard general music class, it would be utilizing the technology that is available at Pearson to do some things that are really more music composition, music-making kinds of experience for kids, using like GarageBand and some of those other kind of apps that really can get kids to be creative as it pertains around music. And then we also have two additional recommendations. So what I'm going to do is hand out here, I updated the document that we had from before and highlighted in yellow where we're talking about making changes. And I'll just wait for that to come around. So everything on the first page is the same, but if you go to the second page on the back, where the recommendations are listed, we added two recommendations based on feedback from staff. There was a lot of concern apart, on the part of staff, that maybe like one department would end up getting to own all the required gateway classes, and how that would impact staffing, et cetera. So we would, we wrote a recommendation four that says that administration will work with the area of interest articulation teams to insurance and balance and equity of staffing for required and elective courses at the middle level to minimize the impact on overall staffing. An example of that would be, we have six gateway courses, we're not going to have the tech ed department teach four out of those six, you know, because of the impact that would have on staffing. That we're confident we can create really strong gateway courses that, you know, a variety of departments could do well with, and we want to balance that out so that it kind of helps with that transition in terms of staffing. And then the fifth recommendation comes with that concern about the timeline of implementation. After talking with the building principals, we felt like we do want to go ahead with the full changes, but what we're really focused on is those new required gateway courses. If you look at recommendation number five, we'll go ahead with that. However, if we find certain areas of interest are struggling to pull all their elective choices together, we may use an existing course that's already at the middle level for one year to kind of buy us some time to create another elective choice that we think is better. And so that hopefully alleviates some of the concern or anxiety that staff has about, you know, how many courses do we need to revise or change at one time? So our number one priority would be those required gateway classes, and then we build as many of the elective options as we can, but if they need like a placeholder for one year, we could go ahead and do that. Then if you go to the next page, you can see the only change we made in the proposed schedule is highlighted in yellow, and that's where we went from an original document that said band, choir, band or choir, physical education, where now it says band, choir, music production, physical education. Otherwise, the rest of the scheduling stays the same as it was originally presented. And then on the back, the only change was, you can see again, that notice of the implication for sixth grade. Questions? Oh, wait, next steps? Next steps. I know, so the articulation teams are meeting on an ongoing basis. They'll be back for a second set of meetings, starting at the end of October. They'll be in charge really of proposing any revised courses or new courses. And then right now, we're working with our secondary principals to ensure that we have a framework for a sustainable program, because sometimes what happens when you do this work, sometimes the instinct of the teacher is just add, add, add classes. And when that happens, then nothing fills, because they can't get enough kids into each section. So we're working with the principals to set up what's sustainable, how many courses can we really offer and know that they will run. And we're doing that both at the middle level and at the high school. And then that framework's going to be laid out for teams towards, that are in their second meetings towards the end of October, so that they kind of can see what kind of parameters to work with. And then finally, before I go to questions, because this plays into it as well, our area of interest, remember, we have the six, they did a nice job meeting in their first round. And we actually have a survey that's going out either tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest. A number of you will get it, because you're parents in the district, so I want you to know that. But it actually looks at the six areas of interest, what they should be about, how important are they to your individual child? And then also, within those areas of interest, what are the types of courses your child is most interested in taking? This is, we thought, just important feedback that we want to hear from parents from. And then Ed Cox is also going to be meeting with focus groups of students after MEA to sort of garner information from students as well. Questions?
Nancy, you mentioned that some of the feedback was about changing a couple of the areas of interest flipping, six and seven.
Yes, yes.
So does this schedule that we're looking at reflect the change or not?
No, good question. I should have mentioned that. It does not. We looked at it, and we felt like where we had placed them, we had good rationale for why we placed them where we did, and so we did decide to keep them there. I will say, if we find out we're hitting some stumbling blocks later on as we continue to work in our tick, we could maybe look at a change there. But like the Health Science one is in sixth grade, because if a kid is both band and choir, they, we need to develop kind of an activity-focused quarter class from the Health Sciences to kind of make up for not doing PE as part of band or choir, or music production and PE. So, and then we just felt like, especially when you look at Pearson's Engineering, which they already have, that Gateway to Technology course, that that course is already kind of set up from a, it's a heavy equipment course. So it didn't seem to make sense to do a flip-flop from that point of view either. So at this point, we're not anticipating changing that.
Anything else? If not, I presume you'd like the Coalition to approve?
Yeah, you know, I think we've talked about it as at least governance direction to continue with the changes.
Okay, so you don't need us to approve?
No, what I might do is ask you to accept it.
Okay. Any discussion? A gift that Sarah wants to accept, recommendation? Hearing none, all those, if they would signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody?
Thanks.
Move to 5.3, which is Framework for Education Forward Update.
Thanks, Mary. Sarah, are you going to be?
I need Nancy to turn, if you could disconnect, that would be great.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
While we're getting the PowerPoint up there, I thought I would take the opportunity for the public's purpose of showing them the PowerPoint that was shown to the Guiding Coalition. And just because sometimes we use terms that maybe the general public isn't as aware of, we had, over the course of the last number of months, we've had a group of people with academics, with technology, and with facilities, working, meeting, working hard, meeting, to come up with recommendations that would ultimately go forward to the Guiding Coalition meeting or Guiding Coalition Team. That team, this week, last week, excuse me, met to here to get all the, all the information from these groups. And then the purpose of a Guiding Coalition is to guide the school board as the school board makes difficult decisions on a referendum going forward and other kinds of things, such as how we use technology, how we, you know, teaching and learning and so forth. So what I, what I think the public would especially need to know is that last time, back in 2010, through our, through our referendum, an interesting thing happened, a group of, I think, four people who were very interested in the district moving forward got elected to the school board. And while most of us think that's a real positive thing, there are people in the community who looked at that as, you know, that there was maybe a, an agenda perhaps, that once you're on a guiding coal, or once you're on a facilities team, that that's the one thing that you get on a school board for then, is to kind of line order something through and get your way. We know that's not the case, but it was perception. So this board took it upon ourselves to make sure that none of you, including our administrative team, have given an opinion as far as leading a direction throughout this process. That's really important to know. It's really important to know that our school board members have been asked to be in a listening mode throughout these months. Our administration have refrained from giving expert opinions throughout the process, because this time with this board, we want to hear from the public. And Crystal will later talk about, I think, some things too that we're doing to engage the community. So we are excited for the opportunity to hear from our public. And the PowerPoint I'm going to show is actually a distillation of opinions that come from my expert team of administrators, and it's the first time. So that's kind of an interesting thing for us. And I also thought there were some interesting things that Guiding Coalition asked about when I showed the PowerPoint. So some of you have seen it before, but I think it was valuable enough that we're going to take the time to talk about it. Then when that's done, I would ask that any members who are here that would want to add in on the Guiding Coalition could speak to that. And we did have a wrap-up of the Facilities Action Team as well, so if there were any comments that would, you know, that you'd want to make, that's, that's great too. So let's see if we can begin here. Okay. One of the things with the Guiding Coalition that was really important is that we wanted to make sure that when the newspaper came out into the, as a public opinion survey, that people understood, just like before, there were a number of options looked at. And so I think there's 21-plus options in the newspaper, but four options presented by the Facilities Action Team, not the school board, not the administration, by this team of people who brought forward, these were the top four they would like our, our public to give us input on. Questions were coming out, though, about what if this, and what if that, could we, you know, does one of these models prohibit us from expanding in the future? Those kinds of things. And so we, we as homework from the Guiding Coalition, asked our administrative team, will you weigh in if any of these options are what I would call option differentiating? Or in reviewing them, is there a way that we could say one works better, one doesn't work at all? So I'm going to share some of those things under some broad headings. So we analyzed the homework questions. The Guiding Coalition brought forth a lot of questions for our homework, and we analyzed them and we coded them. And we put them in about five or six headings. First one being enrollment projections. So as you can see on the first slide here, basically, we knew that we needed enough space for 1,600. The nice part on this referendum is no matter what option people seem to be supporting early in the cause, it really is clear that everyone gets that we at least need 1,600-student capacity added somewhere in our district. The second thing I would want folks to know is that after the administrative team analyzed the work of the Facilities Action Team, we, it was quite clear to us that all four plans could be put together and managed in a 10-plus-year type of small learning community. So I think that's important to know, that nothing was brought forward that, from the Facilities Action Team, that kind of now in looking back, we go, no, that, that doesn't fit, because we can, we can make all of them work. I think it's important that we, we are able to speak the truth, that Shakopee is unique, and for that, I would say, we're very fortunate, blessed, lucky, grateful. But our choices on how we invest and our choices in our direction need to reflect that reality. And I want to share some of that reality with our community. We, if you look at this, this chart here, on the bottom are the, and you'll probably notice that along the bottom are the districts of what I would call one extra-large high school. And, and as we explore Shakopee as being an extra-large high school, how do we compare to the other districts that have that model? So if you take a look, for those who aren't aware, the way we socio-economic, socio-economically, how do we rank? And you can see Shakopee has about 35 percent, and I would, I would argue, growing, in the area of free and reduced percentage, as compared to Prior Lake, Edina 16 percent, Edina 8 percent, Tonka 7 percent. You get the point, that with those challenges come wonderful opportunities to move the bar. And we do know from research, best practice tells us, above all of these other factors with cell sizes that we test and so forth, the most difficult work, the heavy lifting, is, is in the area of free and reduced. And we know that in today's society, with families and so forth, when we went through the previous recession, it really took a toll on some families, and some families haven't recovered. And that's, that's what we're dealing with here. We also have a gift that, that we're really lucky to have, and that is that Shakopee now is starting to represent and look more like the world. For sure, Minnesota and a suburb metro urban area. And you can see the percentage at 36 percent, and again, I would say, growing, as compared to Prior Lake with 14 percent minority students, Tonka 13, Edina 20. Again, when we, when we look at the world of dealing with the opportunity of equity, the equity work is making sure that all students, which is very important to our district, all students have, have the same opportunities, equal access to a great quality education. And what we've learned through Dave and the work of our Achievement Gap work is, we know we have a ways to go. And so this is an opportunity for, again, to, through Avid and other means, to make sure that all students in our, in our community have, have that wonderful access to that higher level education. One of the things that we talked about in the last referendum, and, and as a board, we haven't had a learning session, or we haven't had a, you know, a heart-to-heart speak on operating costs, but oftentimes it's asked, well, if you have 1,600 square feet, or two buildings, one building, how does that compare? Like, is one more expensive than the other? And so what we did is we used our team, and we broke it down. And here's the interesting part, is that operational costs are really two things. One is enrollment, so the number of kids, and then secondly, it's square footages, that, you know, the, the number of square feet in a building for 1,600 students. It is 1,600 students as a separate building, or it's 1,600 students plus the current site for 3,200. 1,600 is 1,600. So we thought, is that an option differentiation here between the two? Enrollment drives the staffing, square foot drives the operations. So if you look at our current high school, it's about 11,700,000 per year to operate. Enrollment, staffing, which we all know is a huge part of that, 10.6 million, and then to run the thing. to run the thing, utilities, maintenance, so forth, it's just over a million at one point.